Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, June twenty-third. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney is present? Our city planner is absent. Our city engineer is present, along with all council members and our city administrator. At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item of business this evening is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to three minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Hi, my name is Casey Cutie. I live on eight-three-six-zero Oakwood Avenue Northeast. I've been a resident here for thirteen years. I just want to talk to tonight about a simple change to allow golf carts and UTVs on the shoulders of our roads and electric scooters on our paved trails. I started a petition to see how the community felt about this, and I've gotten over a hundred signatures from Atsigo residents who are in favor of it. A lot of people just want to be able to get around town in a slower, more relaxed way, whether that's to visit a neighbor, ride to the park, or just a quiet cruise. Golf carts especially help people feel more connected with the community when people are out in their carts. They stop and say hi, check in with each other, and it just makes the neighborhood feel more alive. Atsigo covers over thirty square miles, so not everything is within walking distance. Golf cart or scooter gives people another way to get around, especially in the warmer months, without having to jump into their car for every little thing. I know some people had some concerns about safety, and I've read the comments, and people are worried about kids not paying attention while riding, or parents not being aware of what their kids are doing, and scooters or bikes going too fast around walkers. I get that, but instead of banning things for everyone, we can focus on enforcing respect for other people, for walkers and kids, and for the roads and trails we all share. Most people use their vehicles responsibly. We shouldn't let a few bad examples take away their option for the rest of us enjoy the community in a fun and safe way. It's just about giving the residents more ways to get around town, stay connected, and enjoy Atsigo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? All right, we will close the open forum and move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan.
On the consent agenda, I'd like to bring down item three dot three. We can make that five dot one.
Okay.
And then I'd also like to bring down three dot five. We can make that five dot two.
All right, any other changes? And a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one is a South Central Water Treatment Phase One project. We have a presentation tonight by AE two S.
All right, Madam Mayor, Council. All right, ready? All right, so South Central Water Treatment. What's in front of us this evening is the engineering agreement that would essentially kick off the design of the South Central Water Treatment. Larger project, it's really more of a program. We do plan to come back a later date. I'll point it out on the schedule and have a more thorough discussion of some of the details of the project when we're looking to come for the C Mar, and I'll explain some more C Mar. So Adam, go ahead and get into it. All right, so the couple of bullets for this this evening, a little bit of background information about the project, some specifics on the design scope, and then get into the project delivery method, which will be a little bit new, probably for many of the folks here, and then a little bit of schedule, and then go to questions. So, next slide. All right, so what's in front of you now is the draft, more of a concept site plan. So this parcel was acquired a few months ago with the intent of this being the location of the South Central Water Treatment Facility or Water Treatment Plant. The so there will be a site plan. This is slightly updated from the version that a few of you saw last week that Ron's group has the wetlands styled in a little bit tighter now. So some of that preliminary work on the wetlands is already happening. It's all good news. So anyway, that's the site plan. There'll be a lot more work that goes into the the planning of that site throughout the design. So go to the next slide. Some more of the specifics, basically what's included in what will be this design package. There's some additional wells. Two of the wells were already part of the test well package that had been bid last year. So part of that test well program will also result in public water service wells. So more like a down payment with those wells getting started. There'll be some additional wells. So all of those wells will be to, you know, that'll be the water source that'll go into the water treatment. Then there'll be some onsite and some offsite raw water piping. So that's the water that will be conveyed to the treatment. The offsite portion will be handled by Ron's group with the city engineer, just because it's parallel in the streets. It made more sense to go that direction. So a little bit of a team effort there, but and then getting into the site master planning. So within that parcel, take a harder look at the future infrastructure, the expansion. This is really the the intent right now is that we're doing the first phase of the capacity. It'll be most of the the structure that gets built, the more the phasing happens on the the side with the wells, but this will be most of the structure. Some modeling on that site, and then some of the civil amenities that go with it. On the water treatments are really the heart of the system. The big part is the process, including the filtration. So this is the part that improves the water quality, removing that iron, manganese, radium that we've gotten all the other wells. So we're expecting the new wells to have basically the same thing or similar to it. And all the things that go with that, the HVAC, electrical, the civil site improvements. Additionally, anticipating that there'll be an administration portion to this building. It's going to be the central area for the drinking water side of the utilities and a garage, as well as a ground storage reservoir. As we're continuing to grow, need additional storage volume for that finished water, and then getting that water then connected to the distribution system out to the customers. Next slide. So this is the part that's probably a little bit new, construction manager at risk. So this is a delivery method that has been used extensively for public projects in other states. It was authorized explicitly in Minnesota for public projects in twenty twenty-three. So a little bit of change in state law that helped us to point to consider this. There's a lot of detail that we can go through with C Mar, but probably the biggest summary is that for vertical infrastructure projects, so buildings, especially some of these process projects, there's a lot of advantages for the C Mar delivery method. Most of what it does is get a contractor involved during the design, so it's more of a collaborative delivery method. We're still planning to do the well drilling as the traditional design bid build as that just that delivery method for that portion of the project just fits better with that type of construction. So really trying to tailor the delivery methods for the different pieces of infrastructure. There's a little bit of a flow on the bottom there. Minnesota does require a two-step method, so you start with a request for qualifications. So that's basically a you're trying to get to the point where you're really only interviewing the the outfits that are truly qualified. So then it goes to a request for proposal stage, anticipating there'd be interviews. There'll be a selection committee. And then, once there's a selection recommendation, negotiate that contract. That'll all happen at about thirty percent design. So you're getting that contractor on board earlier. Some differences in roles and responsibilities. Once you start to get over to the actual construction phase, it's basically all the same at that point, other than that this the team's been collaborating for months ahead of that point. It's not just, you know, starting to get the contractor and be engaged once the bids are advertised. So the next slide. Councilmember Lon had suggested this one as a good illustration of what is the difference? And really, a lot of this delivery method is about cost control that with the integrated project delivery methods, of which C Mar is one of those integrated project delivery methods, you're getting the collaboration a lot sooner when you can have that engagement. Hopefully, I don't know if the colors are quite the same, but the it's more of a green. You're getting that collaboration earlier on the timeline when you have a better opportunity to make changes and make adjustments when they're less costly. So especially, you know, if we if we need, we'll get real contractor costs earlier through the guaranteed maximum price process that the C Mar does. If we do need to make adjustments, we can do those early instead of finding out on bid day that we had a bad bid day. So that's a lot of the part. Everything about building it is still the same. It's that there's more overlap with the design stage. So go to the next slide. This one got a little bit busy, but tried to do a as brief of a summary along the top as I could for the different piece of infrastructure and still have a little bit of detail of what stage they were at. And then take the blue boxes as, you know, where it'll be decision points for Public Works Subcommittee. The green box is where it'll be decision points for council or asking for approvals. Where we're at today with the engineering agreement, we've already been through a couple of rounds with Public Works Subcommittee had discussed, you know, a lot of detail around the C Mar delivery method to get to the point where we were comfortable bringing it to the full council. So that's where we're at today is initiating with the engineering agreement. I think when we, the intent or what we've talked about is that when we come back to request the the C Mar advertisement, we'll have a lot more detail at that time of details of both how we intend to, the details of the actual C Mar advertisement that we're going to put out and that, as well as more details of the project. And so what we're thinking right now is that that'll probably be a special session that we'll do a little more detail at that time, and then put out that advertisement for the C Mar. We'll get, we'll have a selection committee that works through that, review and proposals, do the do the interviews. The C Mar is still completely separate from the design team, but they're interacting through separate agreements with the city as the owner. So in that respect, it's very similar to the construction where there's still separate agreements. It is explicitly not design-build, but the teams will be collaborating through the contracts with the city as the owner, basically trying to get the best project that we can. And then it goes into, you know, there's a little bit of different language that goes with it. The C Mar, the GMP is the guaranteed maximum price. That would be the functional equivalent of a bid opening at that point, which is, there'll be draft GMPs working up to that, and then there'll be a final GMP. At that point, that's when it will be, it will come back to the council with a recommendation to approve the final GMP that would be similar to a recommendation to approve bids. And at that point now, it would be actual construction agreements to actually build the project. There's a few other pieces on there that are more like the probably more what we're used to. The wells will still do a traditional design bid build. We'll come ask for permission to advertise or authorization to advertise, and we'll do the the actual bid recommendations, similar with the pipelines. Those are delayed or further back just because of the the test well bid package. We need to get that test well program done in twenty twenty-six so that we know where to locate the wells. And then the pipelines, there would be some to work through with the these men's and get the pipes in the right spots and doing that design. And then, you know, if all of this goes right, a couple of years from now, we will be doing a ribbon cutting on a a new water treatment that'll give us the ability to add a whole bunch more houses with our water system. So that's the goal is really increase capacity of the water system while also having improved water quality. So, next one. With that, we've gone through the detail, gone through a number of different iterations of exactly what's in the the scope of services for the design. You got a summary table here. The design team has gone through the effort to estimate hours level of effort and has come up with this amount for the engineering agreement. This would be scoped through. It'd be bidding on the wells, negotiation on the C Mar side. So basically get up to that point where we would go to the construction phase with the intent of, as we've done with many of the other projects, then we would do an amendment at that construction phase when we concurrently with the contractors' contracts for the those construction phase amendments. Generally, it's the standard contract language that we've worked through on a number of different projects for the terms and conditions. Really no changes on that front end part. Back the backend of the scope, there are some adjustments for the C Mar that, things that are just different because of the different delivery method and working through that with the city attorney. It's in for city attorney review. Probably, I anticipate there'll be a little bit of back and forth there, but I've got a, we've got a draft that's in for review right now. So I think next one is questions.
I have one. I'm set up. So you talked about this came to be in twenty twenty-three that there was the change for the C Mar. So have you done other projects in other communities and I guess, were you impressed with? You talk about collaboration on the front side of it and working through the process. Did you feel that you got something different by using this, in which I know we have to now, but did you get to a different point, or did you feel as though using the way that we used to do it and getting to a project was the same result?
I think the collaborative delivery, really that interaction with the contractor during design, like the people who will actually be building it, get gaining that input throughout the design, it gives you the opportunity to do a lot of things that you're really looking for those items where, you know, if we make this adjustment, the project is still absolutely as good of a project, it just maybe costs less. Or there's a way to do it a little bit differently that allows it to get built, you know, more expediently. Also, just managing risk, getting the contractor in the room when you're talking about things that, you know, things like equipment delivery, you know, the last few years, we've had a lot of issues with particularly electrical gear, like the, those contractors have been, like, they're dealing with it directly every day. Like, most of the information I get about electrical delivery is from the contractors anyway. So this is just bringing them into the room, getting them on the team earlier so that we can do things like game plan the construction phasing just to make the project better, because if we can make, if we can get the construction schedule even a couple of months better, where those general condition costs are no longer costs because we're getting the project done. So it really is about getting the people who are designing and building it collaborating. In general, I, that's my opinion on the C Mar. So I, the first C Mar project I was involved in was in Arizona in two thousand and seven. So like, this has been around for quite a while. My opinion is that for vertical construction, it's the preferred delivery method for horizontal pipelines. Like, it's not that you can't do C Mar for the pipelines. There's just not nearly as much advantage for the pipelines, for the the horizontal projects. So it really is about the project type, whether it's worth it to consider the C Mar delivery method. Adam, you want to push a couple of slides down? I do have a list of so went through what the water wastewater projects that have been initiated in Minnesota since that change about eighteen months ago. And it's, it's a pretty healthy list, considering the pretty short timeframe. The closest one would be Monticello and their water plant that's went to C Mar route there. Right, six, eight months ahead in terms of schedule in Monticello, and they've just gone through their C Mar selection process in Monticello. So I mean, doesn't get a whole lot closer than that. Or a pretty similar project. So that's general Minnesota. I think it was the next one. Include, you know, AE two S projects across many of the other states. Many of these are just because other states have had it authorized for longer. You know, we have less of them in Minnesota because it's been a shorter time frame.
Well, thank you for asking or answering my question. I obviously, I'm not on the Public Works Subcommittee, so you guys have talked about it a lot more, but
We talked about it for three days, yeah.
Okay, there you go. So I mean, as I read through it, I'm like, okay, it kind of makes sense, but I just but I do think having the people in the room because they're the ones putting it in and they know all the steps to it. So having them earlier, or if it's like, hey, we can double up and this could come in at the same time and we feel we're not letting it sit dormant for a little bit.
Usually you get a faster delivery method too for the project as a whole. You're not overlapping like the construction team with the design teams who are able to make decisions in a quicker fashion versus like you go to hard bid, you do bid day opening and you're over budget. What do you have to do? You have to go back to the drawing board, redraw stuff, re-advertise, resend it out to bid. That extends the schedule out usually, especially when you're talking about a larger project such as this. You know, and with the risks of tariffs and other things, you are at a higher risk of not maintaining that budget during this type of scenario that we have right now.
I could see it's more of, it's the change orders that we're not going with or adding the alternates. Like, so this almost takes away that piece of it that we're used to seeing.
You'll still have, you'll still have some of those things. You'll have a different bucket to work with. You'll have something called contingency, which will be something we'll get into more later, but contingency is basically for those unknowns or situations that you run into during construction. You run into a bunch of peat in the soils, and now you gotta, you gotta excavate and soil correct and all that other stuff. And there's other things too. There's weather conditions that can play a factor into costs of a project, which could result in a change, or this is you're just allocating a reservoir dollars to deal with that. So it's not money that has to be spent, and then you would still have alternates if you don't spend that money that you can maybe pull the trigger on.
It does, it does really help with risk mitigation.
Yeah, big time.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I was gonna say that when we were having the meetings on this Public Works Subcommittee, that was, that was kind of my big concern as well is with, with sort of traditional design bid build, we kind of have built-in checkpoints of, you know, the change orders. And in the C Mar world, we probably won't, hopefully won't, have change orders because it would all be handled by the C Mar, unless it's something that, you know, completely out of scope. But we still have the checkpoints as well, and we still have someone who's ultimately responsible for the success of the project. And kind of the thing that swayed me towards C Mar was what the member previous pointed out in that slide or had that slide added, which was, it's kind of the one-ten-one-hundred rule, right? If you have things you need to change, it's a lot cheaper to change it when it's just on paper. So if you can get the people in the room that are going to be able to tell you what makes sense, that saves a lot of money, saves a lot of headache and a lot of frustration. So that kind of swayed me towards, we should probably use C Mar in this case.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I did have one quick one. It was one of the first couple of slides. The sort of the rough layout of the site. I think the last time I saw this, the access drive had a wetland on it. Has that actually been removed?
Yeah, so the preliminary, the previous version, let's call it the last week version. It was the, it was the desktop where it had, you know, we know, we're pretty sure these are wetlands. These are ones you need to go check out in the field. The boots have been on the ground now, and that, that was what that was eliminated is when actual got on the ground were able to investigate better than the desktop version. It really turned out to not be a wetland.
Yay.
Which is good.
Yeah, when I, when I did look at this, I was pleasantly surprised by how much less hatching there was.
Okay.
So good.
So thank you to Ron's group.
Thank you, Ron. Boots on the ground. Tell us there's not water.
Nikki and Eric.
All right, any other questions? If there's no more question, thank you, Scott, and we have a motion. Anyone like to make it? Oh, okay. I'd like to do the motion. Okay? And I haven't done this before, so. All right, I motion to approve professional service agreement between the city city and Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services LLC AE two S. In other words, for the South Central Water Treatment Phase One project in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The final execution of the agreement pending review and approval by the city attorney.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Ryan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. It's got, all right, moving on to item five point one. Ryan?
Yes, I asked for this to be pulled down so it'd be a separate vote. I oppose this action because our city is able to receive excellent service from our existing contract providers at a price point that is cost efficient for the taxpayer. If this action is approved, the expenditures to date for our one-person fire department will increase to three million, five hundred, six thousand, eight hundred, seven dollars and twelve cents, which is over two and a half times the cost of the contracts.
Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, a motion?
I'm here, I'll make motion. Motion to approve pay application number six in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and ten and twenty-nine cents for work completed on the fire and emergency services facility project.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Item five point two. Ryan?
Madam Mayor, this is on the Fire Department's Community Risk Reduction Team. Just a few weeks ago, we were presented with an internally conducted staffing study for the fire department. That staffing plan included a duty crew and paid-on-call firefighters, along with college interns or high school cadets. It did not include anything related to a new or community risk reduction team. In fact, it noted that these activities would be handled by the duty crew. Education and risk reduction was and should be handled by our contract providers. However, we've told them that they aren't longer welcome in our city. We told them we don't need their help. Now we're adding more staffing to fix a problem that we created. This is a textbook case of cost overrun and a clear reminder of why we need our contract providers. None of these expenses were budgeted. As if that weren't already bad enough, this request comes with no budget, no specified number of positions, nothing. It's a request for a blank check, stripping away what little oversight the council still has over fire department spending. It's a request for a blank check, stripping away what little oversight the council still has over fire department spending. For those that attended the Joint Public Safety Commission meeting, they may have noted that there was some confusion from residents because one of these so-called community risk reduction team members was already claiming to be a city employee. They claimed to be working for the fire chief, which was surprising since the council retains all hiring oversight for city employees. Yet we've had these team members running around in department guard representing the city. I think the reason the council was not consulted on any of these decisions is because my colleagues have made it clear that this will get approved even without a thought. This was on the consent agenda because the administrative subcommittee has already given their blessing for this. How much is this going to cost? We don't know and we don't care. How many employees will be hired for this new team? It doesn't matter. We are past the point of even bothering to budget for fire department expenditures. We have now transcended the constraints of budgeting and we have found the nirvana of endless spending. We don't even need a council anymore because no oversight will happen. Now, I know what the response is going to be because there's an empty promise in here to keep the expenses within the non-existent budget. We'll just use the existing fire department budget. But if that's the case, what isn't getting done with the money the council had already authorized for the fire department? Where are we pulling from? And why were we given a budget with that much bloat that a new team could be stood up from whole cloth without it impacting anything? This council needs to do a better job of scrutinizing department budgets if there's this much extra taxpayer money just waiting to be spent on unplanned expenditures. The blank check and lack of a budget is bad enough, but this request and the language within shows more planning should have been done here. The requirements of the job of a community risk reduction team member are as follows. Be over the age of eighteen, have a driver's license, have a high school diploma or G E P. That's it. If you can fog a mirror, you can join the team. But the job responsibilities mean we will have these team members conducting fire inspections without being licensed fire inspectors. They will be providing education on fire safety without having any background in fire safety. We're going to have them develop fire safety initiatives without being trained in that field. They're going to analyze fire incident data after we've claimed that it didn't exist in the fire staffing study. But the real kicker is they will be operating fire apparatus and other city-owned vehicles without having the required classification or training on those apparatus. One might think we would have the requirements that fit the role, but instead I'm sure the response is going to be, don't worry. We'll train them to fill the requirements of the role. And to that I say, at what cost? Where is that in the budget? What I think should be obvious to anyone who has followed this saga is that this new team is really a smokescreen for pre-hiring outside of the council's normal procedures. The narrative included in this request even hints at the fact that it's expected that these team members will transition into being paid-on-call firefighters. So now residents have to pay for a fire chief before we even have a department, fire trucks that can't even be used and a team of firefighters that won't be able to fight fires. I will not be supporting this because the fire department department does not need a squad of cheerleaders. It needs a reality check.
Any comments? I have a few, Ryan, actually. When we talked about this at admin meeting, as you referred um to Cory and I said on that, we went through this, we asked questions. Um so to say that it was just given a blessing, I think is not a fair statement. Um we do have um upcoming events, like we have community events of Touch a Truck, National Night Out, Night United Prairie Festival. There are things um that are already in the works for where we bring the fire truck to. Um there are certain uh community events that we anticipate them to attend. And so by saying there's a blank check to it, we've already outlined that it's not just they're they're going to be working. It's fifteen dollars an hour if you look at what the cost is for this person or people. So um and also I would say that by meeting some of them at the Touch a Truck event, most of them do have already existing fire background. So by saying that they just have to be eighteen and breathe on a mirror, that's not a fair statement either. So uh just like any of our seasonals that we hire in the other departments, this would we're we're hoping to get the best applicants for this also.
I have a question. So Ryan commented on, and I'm not seeing it outlined in the description of the program overview. They said something about they're gonna be doing fire inspections and stuff. I I don't see that in here at all. They they talk about smoke alarm installations, home safety checks, but that's not an inspection specifically. Um but I guess I'm not sure where you were getting that information, Ryan.
Yeah, the item C for job function as well as item I.
See under one?
Yep.
Okay, that's smoke alarm installation programs and home safety inspections. Okay, um and which one?
I.
I.
Provide support fire prevention inspections as directed.
Support, but not doing the actual inspections. The home one, I you know, maybe expanding on what that actually means. But I I hear what you're saying. I would imagine for businesses and stuff like that, the inspections would be done by a licensed individual if somebody's checking to see if somebody installed a uh extinguisher in their home in the right locations or the um fire alarms and stuff like that to check and make sure that they're in functioning order or helping somebody that can't reach to change a battery or something like that. I don't I I see that as fitting into this role, but um I guess. Yeah. So this is what the objective is just to have support member that's helping guide the rest of the team and get things set up is the way it seems for the most part, plus doing some other beneficial stuff. So whether it's organizing events. I guess I'm asking a question as far as like, is that's the way I'm interpreting this is it's really a support function like a kind of a a broader broader than admin function. It's like, we're gonna get things set up. We're gonna pitch a tent. We're gonna you know, do some um announcements and communications.
Mayor, I I think what Councilmember one is saying is accurate. These are these are not full-time, they are not licensed firefighters. This is a transition staffing component to bring the department from where we are now to operational phase in twenty twenty-seven.
Now, is this um to help set the stage for what's going to be a department? Um and this will transition into a different role.
Yes, I would anticipate that completely, that once you have uh a staff group of paid-on-call and duty crew members that they're handling those key functions that a fire department, fire inspections. You would expect them to, and these staff members would be operating more of a support role, so.
Mayor Mayor, I would just the way I read that is that is not the case. Um the second page of the narrative says that some members of the C R R team are anticipated to have interest in the transition to roles as paid-on-call firefighters. Uh completing the required training and certifications. Others will continue to serve in C R R capacities and support community programs, even if they are not fully qualified as firefighters. So it seems to me like we're creating a whole nother team that is going to exist as a separate team after we have firefighters.
Well, it and it could go away. Right, it could go away, but uh it I think they're just trying to leave the door open instead of saying for sure it's gonna go away. It could expand into a different capacity. So I know in some communities, they have like people that will help respond if there is a a fire event at somebody's house. So a support member would show up with blankets and clothing and stuff for family members that are suffering the loss of their home. And I believe in others, those communities, they call that a CERT program. Instead of C R R. I know the Public Safety Commission years ago looked at a CERT program.
Mayor Mayor, my understanding of CERT is that it's a community-run organization. It's not a paid, well. It's not, they don't, it's not a municipal organization. They don't belong to the city. They're not employees of the city. It's a community run organization.
I believe that's the time they were looking to figure out how they could be volunteers but be hired through the city because there were some concerns with insurance. Am I correct on that?
Yes, and Mayor, that was approaching a decade ago that those things were under consideration, so I'm not up to speed exactly on on that conversation, but.
And it went away out, obviously.
Uh Councilmember Dunlap is hinting at, you know, progression into future roles and there would be additional job descriptions and recruitment. By being hired as a C R R team member, in no way qualifies anybody to be a firefighter. There would be a separate recruitment and hiring and background vetting process to maybe these people are interested in that when those positions exist in the future and they would have to apply and be qualified and interview and be hired by the city council for those positions at that time.
Adam to Ryan's comment about the budget.
Yes, Mayor. Uh so if you look at the total fire protection budget within the general fund, it's uh one point five nine three million dollars. So the idea of finding seven hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred dollars to pay five to ten members, fifteen dollars an hour for anywhere from six to twelve specific events throughout the year is manageable by myself and the emergency services director to ship budget dollars from maybe a supply account or a training account into paying for wages for the C R R team.
So where's the budget for the C R R team? How many people are going are we going to need? All of that is absent from this request.
Mayor, council, we anticipate an initial hiring recommendation of somewhere between five to ten members, so. Again, we're targeting six to twelve events that may require anywhere from two to four members. A larger event maybe such as National Night Out or uh the Prairie Festival, maybe there would be more people. Uh maybe you have the whole five to ten member crew working on a event like that, but on a typical event, it's two to three people working two to three hours.
Any other questions?
I guess if if that's the intent, again, it's not included in the request, but the job, major job functions and all of that kind of stuff does not lend itself to we just have people showing up to National Night Out, you know, it's just gonna be a couple of hours for a couple of people. The the job description is a lot more in-depth than that and maybe that's because it's gonna transition later on, but I'm looking at what's in front of me, so.
Mayor, council, that that may be fair and to say that the job description hints at more qualifications because those are the type of people that the city is looking to attract. We're not looking to attract seventeen-year-old, eighteen-year-old kids who are not interested in fire service. We're looking at people that have some investment or interest in serving their community in a public safety factor. So the job description hinting at those type of responsibilities or roles warrants attracting the right type of person toward the role.
Any other questions or comments? Why is a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, Tina.
Motion to approve the community risk reduction, C R R team member job description and authorize recruitment of team members.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Cory. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Moving on to city council reports and updates, um heritage preservation, Cory.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh O H P C met on June tenth and discussed themes for the Prairie Festival and thirty-fifth anniversary. Um and incorporating a a possible time capsule.
And they're planning to advertise that, correct?
Yeah, so so they're talking about, you know, building up a big booth with, you know, I guess advertising people that to come in and uh come up with ideas, what to put in the time capsule, so. More to come on that.
I'm excited.
Mayor, council, there was an article in the current edition of the newsletter that references this and I believe uh communications posted a social media post.
We talked about that at the end and.
Yeah, newsletter would include a similar article encouraging people to share their ideas or bring bring them to the Prairie Festival.
Excellent.
Alright, next is Parker Recreation, Michelle.
Um yes, we met last Tuesday. Um we talked about um Carrick's Landing. Sounds like the dock is going to be installed this week, otherwise the paddle ports have been delivered and um are ready for people to utilize. Um pending the dock, which will make it a little bit easier to get off your kayak. You told me it was dangerous. Yeah, it was for me. I tried it. We sent her down first. Send me down first. I needed help to get out of my kayak, which is like never a problem. It was just bizarre.
But the dock wasn't there, so.
But no, 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 it wasn't. So I'm looking forward to the dock being there and then I'm gonna try it out for real this time. Um so and then the other thing that we talked about, a big um large conversation around the Prairie Park master planning. Um and so we reviewed kind of all the different features that have been um kind of identified as key items to be included into the master planning effort um and then talked about the different phasing. So it's gonna be broken up. It looks like possibly two phases. Um and um kind of what components are gonna go into each phase and more to come on that as that develops further. Um and um yeah, it was really the big announcements there.
And just to confirm, I believe I saw a post that the June thirtieth would be when we go live.
Mayor, that is the sorry, that is the anticipated go-live date.
Okay, for the for the.
The city website does include a new button on the front page.
Yes.
Uh with that information.
For the kayak mental and stuff like that.
Yeah.
More information there. They're gonna be posting videos if they haven't already done so, some of the.
Maybe you could do the video, show people how to get off.
Yes, the right way or the wrong way. Yeah, I could do both. I have to learn the right way now.
Well, when you told me that, I was like, well, they talked about this dock and.
Yeah, it was just not installed yet. They had some delays on the um fabrication side of things, it sounds like, so.
Well, at least you didn't end up in Dayton. You would have just kept floating down.
It's okay. I I that's usually where I end up.
Okay.
Maybe you could be in um the safety camp.
Here's what you don't do.
Okay, thank you. Uh Planning Commission, Ryan.
Yes, Mayor Mayor, the Planning Commission met last Monday. Uh we received some excellent training from our city attorney. Thank you. I felt very informative and helpful. Um the Planning Commission also reviewed and approved uh updates to the subdivision ordinance. Uh the Planning Commission meeting that was scheduled for July seventh has been canceled.
Thank you. Um Public Safety Commission, Tina was absent. I was present. Um it was a short meeting. Information was passed out or packet from our three departments. Um they are working on the mission statement, but at that time, uh the commissioner that was working with Daryl and Heidi, our communications person, they were meeting the next day. So they anticipate to be bringing back some ideas and revisions uh to their July meeting. And what I was going to add to that, with the resident left, but I believe Jason did speak with the resident who spoke during open forum. Um and I'll I'm he's shaking his head. I'm wondering if you invited him to the Public Safety Commission. Okay, good. That's what I was planning to talk to, let him know that that would probably be a good start. We could also then talk with our planner. Um we have visited this item years ago and so working with the Wright County Sheriff's Department and staff and probably also Park and Rec would be a very good fit since or Dave, do you have something? You looked at me.
No, no.
Oh, okay. Dave, you can be involved too.
Not usually involved in Park and Rec stuff.
No, no, right. Um I mean, he did talk in here about scooters and I we can all agree scooters are already using our our trails and they go really, really fast.
Well, it depends on what you mean by scooters, I think.
Well, uh he just said scooters.
Yeah.
Well, Mayor, I guess I do have something.
Yes.
There's a uh, I don't know if you've looked at this or anybody on the Park and Rec's team has looked at this, but there's a guide the state puts out. Uh I think it's called like low-power and non-traditional vehicles or something like that.
Okay.
So it addresses all these different things that people are grappling with right now, like scooters and golf carts and e-bikes and e-bikes that are not exactly like e-bikes because they're more powerful than e-bikes. So there's big range of products out there that cities are trying to grapple with. Whether they can regulate, how to regulate, because some of these are regulated, most of these are regulated by state statute, but some are not, or at least they're technically partially or fully illegal under state statute. So you might wanna look at that guide as a starting point when you think about what kind of regulations the city wants to do.
Sure. Could you make sure that you get us all an email of that and then also send that to the Public Safety Commission?
Yeah.
Um, have Katie send that to him. I just think having that information. Ahead of time, just so they can look at since.
Yeah, I can.
I appreciate that people are very passionate one way. I've also gotten a lot of emails the other way for it too, so. And I'm not sure where council is, what, if they've gotten emails either way on it, but.
Um, Madam Mayor, I, I think, I mean, at most, well. I don't wanna say whether I've seen more one or the other, cause it's just social, social media. But um, I did notice that uh, Forest Lake recently allowed theirs just a couple months ago. I think they reversed. They used to have a prohibition and they, they've changed it. One of the council members there said they were surprised. Um, they were initially against it, but. They noted that they went around to the other cities that have allowed it and they haven't seen any issues. Was that council member's comment in, in, in Forest Lake. Um, and then I know Champlin also reversed their position on golf carts that used to be prohibited. Believe that was about two years ago. And they went with kind of a licensing program. So I think it would be a good idea to look at. What we could implement here, what options are available. I can tell you a couple of years ago when I was going door to door, it was a pretty hot topic. I had quite a few people say, we need to change our mind on uh, the golf cart issue for, on local streets. Um, so I would uh, be in favor of us having a look at what ordinances would make sense for Atsigo. Was that mostly in Martin Farms? Were you, you're, uh, most, I would say mostly in the northeast side of the city and then. Of course, in the northwest, they do it anyway. You see them on golf carts all over the place. So they're not really following the ordinance anyway, but um, you know, I think uh. Probably some areas of the city are uh, would be better for this kind of ordinance.
Sure.
But.
I know when we looked at it last time, it was, it was very, it was golf carts and U T Vs. They did not want just golf carts. It was.
Yeah, I think one plate to the other.
Yeah, and that's where the disconnect. And tonight, he definitely said golf carts and he did say U T Vs and then talked about scooters, so.
So, so, but technically U T Vs are allowed within the snow, with the snowmobile ordinance right now, today.
But they can't ride in the ditch, correct, Jason?
Me and Michelle are both in a snowmobile club and I know that.
Yeah.
They allow them, no.
No.
Before he answers, I was, I was just gonna say, that's the thing that doesn't make sense to me is I believe we allow U T Vs. We don't allow golf carts at all.
So no.
No U T Vs.
No U T Vs, no.
I thought that was in.
Four-wheelers.
Snowmobile.
Yeah, no, no, just snowmobiles during snowmobile season, is my understanding.
So the state recognizes the different classes of the vehicles. You have U T Vs, A T Vs, different classes of A T Vs. Golf carts are gonna be a separate thing. We kind of look at the totality of the circumstances of each individual item to try to narrow what statutes we're gonna go to. Because some of the statutes, if I'm being honest with you, seemed a little bit contradictory. Cause we can kind of look at specifically, you know, City of Atsigo. Make sure any trails, absolutely not, no motorized vehicle. Technically, a power wheels would be in violation of it here in the City of Atsigo. Um.
But I assume you're not writing any tickets for that.
No, we will.
A job. I was like.
So, but to, to point like how extreme we can technically take it, so to speak, to give that example. Um, if you start going down into the A T V statutes, there are different classes and each class has different rules. And you could technically interpret some of the rules inside of our city. Uh, the California style roads, Palm Green Avenue as it winds around. You could technically take the state statute and interpret it different ways depending on how we're looking at it. So again, we use the totality of the circumstances to whether or not we're gonna use it, even pull the vehicle over. Um, do I have reasonable articulable suspicion? Even do a traffic stop on this vehicle? Um, and then go down the line of, do we need to do a citation with it? We write very few citations if any for some of these things. It's typically an education, explain this is why this rule is in place or what our interpretation of the rule is, go from there. We typically won't issue any sort of summon citation, traffic ticketing like that unless there's something egregious with the situation. Um, I just think there's too many things that are open for interpretation on there. Um. I'll, I'll kind of give you an example. If you use a class two U T V, so you have a Polaris Ranger side by side. Um, and let's say Queens Avenue, you have a, you know, big wide road with these big wide shoulders. People will sometimes drive on the shoulder. Well, you're not technically supposed to be on the shoulder. You're supposed to be technically in the lane of traffic. Because you're use, you're, you're using your blinkers like you're a normal vehicle and you're a registered vehicle. But then when you get to the turn lane suddenly here, it's this super goofy situation of like, well, is it an A T V? Is it a motor vehicle? What are you using it as? Uh, some, sometimes we see that with the golf carts too. It's like, well, what, what are you using this as right now? Or is it a, is it a motor vehicle? Is it a class one U T V? It's really kind of bizarre situation that. Quite frankly, we just have to take each individual incident or observation as its own thing. And try to apply what we can at the time. And essentially what it comes down to, is this a public safety issue or not? And we make a decision from there.
In regards to snowmobile, I just wanna answer that for you. So most of the trails go through private landowners. For example, Wednesday is the landowner's dinner, um, that we do for Olive Bright County. Those people sign off saying snowmobiles can go certain times. There has to be snow. We don't erect their crops, wreck the fields. Um, but the only spot that you would be able to potentially, and I would even look at you for this, is thirty-nine, otherwise.
Yeah, thirty-nine is.
Thirty-nine is the only one and I've never seen.
I think there's a couple other locations, just.
Well, but like you're coming from like my section over by Quade, you're going through dark and long holes, you're going.
Oh, yeah, the trails.
It's all, it's all people's property. It's all private property.
All the trails on the east side of the city are going exclusively through.
Private.
Yards and broad property and trying to get the certain approvals and it's.
Yeah, and those do not. I've seen the, the language on there. It does not include anything outside of snowmobiles in the winter.
Yeah, so then like our, our own city ordinance, without getting into detail, crazy detail, we can certainly table it for the uh, Public Safety Mission. Or commission with this stuff, but yeah, it essentially, it tries to take the snowmobile map and A T Vs and tries to put it together as. One thing, but then that leads to its own problems too. So with interpretations of. And maybe I misspoke, cause I, I'm thinking of A T Vs, right? And I, I, my memory of the ordinance. Is that A T Vs are allowed as part of that snowmobile map. But maybe I'm wrong.
No.
No, no, we're in the club and we, if anyone comes and asks, we tell them it's only. And, and, and I'm not referring, uh, you'd have to pull it up if.
We don't, we don't have the mate.
But Dan's not here tonight, so.
Yeah, Dan would. So I know, so Ryan, I think I know what you're actually referring to. There's, how it interprets, there's a couple of things in our ordinance that will basically. Throw things on top of one another that says like, uh, a class two is equivalent to a snowmobile. And that's where we're running into the problem. Is sometimes the city's ordinance with that basically saying, um, you know, the A T V class two. Uh, use the same map as the snowmobile and we'll use that as the city ordinance. Those actually conflict each other a little bit with the state statute. And that's where we kind of run into those problems. So I know, I know what you're referring to. So, and hence my confusion of trying to even explain it.
Yeah.
I'm giving a very clear as mud situation, which I'm famous for, but um. Quite frankly, that's where we run into the issues. It's just these different things picking and choosing, but it's appropriate for that.
So would you recommend that at the very least, we clarify the ordinance?
Yes. That would be.
That's why we're directing to him.
And that was one of the, one of the previous conversations we had, even with the golf cart, is because the golf cart would be. Potentially um, conflicting with the state statute down there. And that was part of the discussion of trying to get the, the golf carts. Class A, U T V, class two A T V, snowmobiles, all trying to put these different languages in there. And making it that much more complex and then saying which roads. So e- essentially, if, if I go into the history of that conversation, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I can't remember exactly when it was when we were having that discussion about the golf carts. Um, most of that came down to, at that time, we were having more road construction in the city. Than we've had in a long time. And we were recognizing, because we don't have a tr- traditional layout of the city. It was very difficult to say it would work here, but it's really not gonna work over here. And with the road construction, there's just not the time to be throwing extra vehicles into the, into the situation, cause we were having all sorts of traffic complaints around the city. So that was one of the main reasons we, I think that uh, kind of got pushed away at the time. And so that was part of the explanation that I gave to the resident that came and said, public safety would be a good place to, we can have a little bit more open conversation about this. Pull up in the, the ordinances and we can.
I, I feel bad that you left, but.
Well, I wanted to explain to him that.
Sure.
Again, that with an open forum, there's no requirement to have a discussion back and forth.
Right.
And like, we can have the discussion down the line.
Sure.
So I wanted to invite him to that and then.
Thank you.
Then the commission can have some sort of direction for staff or.
And we can have Dan send what we currently have, get that to him. Um, have Dave get us copies of what you were referring to. Pass it on. Okay, thank you.
I have the residence number. I texted him.
Okay.
With the date of everything.
Great.
He has anything else you can contact.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, thank you.
I had reached out to him and I saw his post and I said, you know, it'd probably be best for you to come to open forum like that and start the ball rolling. So.
Sure, thank you. Okay. Uh, we are done with Public Safety Commission. Um, we're still on our city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything?
Madam Mayor.
Corey.
Just gonna mention Councilmember Dunlap and Adam and I attended the Albertville Social.
Okay.
With our uh, Albertville friends. Uh, it was a big turnout. I thought it went really well. It was fun.
I'm glad you guys went as wet ducks. I, I messaged them and I said, I'm sorry, I, it looked really bad at my house and I was like. I know where that tent is and it's a long way from where I need to park.
There was no competition for parking also.
That's actually a good point. I didn't think of it that way, but yes, I'm glad it was good.
Yeah, went well.
I have one more update. Yeah, I'm gonna be attending the uh, legislative update, okay?
Friday, great. Thank you. That's at the county? Yes, okay, thank you. Alright, anyone else? Alright, moving on to staff reports and updates. First item on here is to consider scheduling a special meeting for July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor Council, thank you. Uh, if I could request a five thirty P M meeting on July fourteenth. Uh, for special topics ranging from potential offers uh, for sale of city property, uh, budgets. Uh, some updates on previous things that the councils discussed uh, earlier this year, including uh, strategic planning, council handbook. And then also a legislative update that uh, has some uh, impact on city council, so. Don't know if we'll get to all of those, but that's the.
I was gonna say, it sounds like a lot at five maybe.
We.
So we may just continue it after.
Correct.
Okay.
Or we'll limit the discussion to the priority items, so.
Okay. Um, is everybody good with the fourteenth at five thirty? Yes, everyone? Okay. And I will make a motion to schedule a special city council meeting for the July fourteenth at five thirty. Second. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, meaning is scheduled.
Alright.
Now, Adam.
Mayor, thank you. Uh, uh, two quick updates. Uh, please mark your calendars for July twenty-eighth. So that is a tentative date uh, to do a ribbon cutting for the West Waste Water Treatment Facility.
Okay.
Uh, some more information to come from Operations Manager, uh, Nedermeier on that, but just wanted to get that date out there.
What, what time are you?
Yeah, specifics not defined, but likely mid to late afternoon.
Okay.
Cause it has a council meeting date, so. And a reminder, city offices will be closed uh, next Friday for Independence Day.
Thank you. Adra.
Thank you, Mayor. You have no updates?
Dave?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. I think Ryan's mentioned it. I did come to Planning Commission a week ago, give a training. Um, I thought it went well. I'd like to um, start doing that on a fairly regular basis, maybe every other year or something. What do I do for the council? After the election for the council, you know, as an orientation for new members and repression for continuing members, I can just make high doing the same thing for Planning Commission. That kind of fell by the wayside. It wasn't happening for a while after COVID, but I'd like to get it back on the schedule, so. Not, probably not every year, but maybe every.
I think it was great and I, I did um, appreciate Commissioner Kincanon when she said like, did something happen that we're in trouble? Like I think they were worried that you were.
Yeah.
Doing a training, but.
I've been, I typically don't attend a meeting, so when the attorney shows up.
Yeah, right, right. And then you show them the graph and what to do and where they, yeah, so.
So I just wanted to clarify. I was just there to give a training and there's no problems.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update on a few projects. Uh, Atsigo Creek, that's pretty well wrapped up. I sent some photos to. Uh, Adam and I expect in the next uh, Friday's summary, he'll probably include some of those in there. Uh, looks pretty good to me, so it's tough to get to right now when Prairie Point Fourth uh, development moves forward. Um, then the road crossing will be put in in some streets near it, so. But for now, it's, it's difficult to get to. Uh, Odine Avenue Water Main, uh, this utility staff and I are meeting with the H O A. Uh, on July first, cause we will be putting a P R, a pressure reducing valve within their property. Um, and we're sending notices to adjacent landowners, but that's gonna start probably prior to your next council meeting. Uh, the twenty twenty-five millon overlay project throughout the city. Um, the city's crews have completed. The storm or the sanitary sewer manhole rehab project. There are just a few of them left. Um, so we're gonna be doing the pre-con, but again, that might. Start around by the time your next council meeting is. Just wanna let you know that that's gonna be kicking off. Uh, the next council meeting, the trails, the two trails that the city got awarded grants for, uh, we'll be considering those. Tanglewood second, second grading is going on, um, down by Seventieth Street and their uh, border of Albertville. Uh, Prairie Point Fourth is gonna start up. That's over by Prairie View Schools. And then uh, other developments are wrapping up, uh, Anna Acres, Sockman Meadows and Old Pass Fourth, so. Lots of work going on in town besides uh, the fire station going on too.
Thank you. Sergeant Almonds? Should've just stayed up there.
Yeah, well. I know better. Um, I did have, I'm, I'm not knowing that that was gonna get brought up, but I did have in my list that we have a few complaints. A number of complaints, um, just warm weather. There's kids home from school, so they're, they're out at the parks and they're using different vehicles. That have little engines on it, whether it is, to your point, scooters with little engines on or little mini A T Vs. Um, that's not necessarily just an Atsigo problem. That's countywide. We're getting those sort of things everywhere, you know, it's the warm weather. And they're out on the trails, they're in the parks. We're trying to, again, case by case basis for us. Um, you know, we're not gonna be out citing kids for anything. Um. So case by case basis, usually we just have a conversation with the parents, try to get them on board with limiting that activity to just their yard. Or try to figure something out. Um, sometimes it's a little difficult, but um, it's a lot of conversation with parents, so haven't had any.
Are you knocking on wood? Well, I was gonna ask if there's been any accidents.
I. No, I'm knocking on wood.
Good.
At the second I said it, I don't like to jinx myself like that, cause for a certain reason, when I talk up here, things transpire after. So, um, okay, a couple of other things. I will go into this a little bit. I have this on my list, just cause I have another meeting that I have to go to. That is gonna directly talk about it, but I thought it was kind of interesting how it relates to Atsigo. Um, so. Uh, on the fourteenth, we had the, the shootings that occurred in Brooklyn Park in the City of Champlin. Uh, that was Saturday morning that that had happened. Well, that Saturday happened to also be, um, I kind of have it written down as all hands on deck. For my, the, the, the title of my notes here. Um. How it relates to Atsigo is the Wright County Sheriff's Office on that Saturday had obligations, obviously for our patrol division. We have contracts, how many cars need to be in each city, um, including Atsigo. Uh, we also had an obligation and a contract that day to support the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office for a joint powers agreement at U S Bank Stadium. It was a concert. We had a number of people, deputies that had to be at a concert. Um, at the same time, we had a contract for Friendly City Days. We had a number of people, as I discussed at the last council meeting, we had a number of deputies that need to be there. Um. Everything that happened with the shooting, there is things that had transpired and kind of slowly pushed into Wright County for some of the different obligations. That morning, there was a scheduled demonstration or protest in the City of Atsigo at Tom Ever's office over on Parish Avenue. Um, there was scheduled protests across the country, including one that was supposed to be in Anoka County, which was the, probably one of the closest ones to the shootings. That event was canceled because the governor essentially got on and said, these protests are going to be a target for the shooter that is on loose. So that was related by the governor of Men- Menon, Minnesota, and the Anoka one was canceled, the Atsigo one was not. So the people that were going to go to the Anoka, Anoka one came to Atsigo. So we ended up with the largest protest group that we've had. Probably of any capacity in Atsigo. Um, so I was in contact with the organizer for the Atsigo one early that morning. Um, she gave me a schedule. This is what time we're showing up. This is what time we're leaving. So I came in early to make sure I could just be present for it again with a ton of confusion as to what was going on with the shootings that were happening in the metro area. What was transpiring with the investigation. Um, so I made sure that I was just there and present for the entirety of the protest. Um.
Some very minor things occurred there and that would be super minor, um, in, in the grand scheme of things. So that was, um, I guess some, some conversations with different people, but there wasn't any major issues. And like I said, when you have the organizer stated that was, there was a thousand people. I don't know if I would count it that high. It was definitely in the hundreds for sure. Um, so we were there. Some of the other obligations that we had, that kind of threw some, threw, threw us for a loop that day. We had representatives of ourselves for us that live in Wright County. Again, with confusion of what was going on with the shootings, we then had an obligation to ensure that we had protection for those people into place. We started with just extra patrols. It got to the point where once the, once night fell, we had uh, deputies and marked squad cars on every single one of those houses of those representatives, uh, state representatives for this, uh, in Wright County. Uh, there was a number of them. Uh, we, the sheriff, Sean Derringer, made sure he was caught in contact with each of them and making sure that they have an open line of communication as to what our game plan was. And I didn't think that they needed that. We could facilitate that. I know I spoke with one of the representatives and was trying to get a good feel to say, I don't want to feel like an occupation force with the extra patrol on your house, but at the same time, I want to be close and but again, I have no idea what's going on with the shooting at that particular time. I had no idea of if, if, what the next target was be, there was a hit list um, at the time that we weren't aware of, um, and going from there. The response to different calls that we had, we then recognized we needed to send two squad cars to basically every single call because with that particular time, one squad car, you know, a fake squad car, so we're making sure that every single call we had two squad cars. Uh, the FBI had different leads and tips and follow-ups that they needed to do in Wright County, so we needed to escort the FBI to most of these calls that so had, they had marked squad cars to go them. Otherwise, they were showing up in plain clothes and, and or uh, you know, showing another badge and having unmarked vehicles. So we were going to go in there and follow them. We increased the suspicious persons calls, suspicious vehicle calls, because naturally people are going to be aware of their surroundings. We're calling nine-one-one to say, hey, this car is out of place. So those increased quite a bit. We also were running into an issue of any world events that are happening. So I give an example, as there was attacks on, um, you know, a US base, a military base today in Qatar. Um, there are a certain populations, a percentage of the population who go through psychological manic episodes where they believe that they are somehow involved in the incident and they were calling nine-one-one, having basically either PTSD attacks, they're having manic episodes of different um, psychological things. Well, as this was happening on, on the day of the fourteenth, we were having a lot of those calls where people felt that they somehow were a part of it or so we were having to kind of sort those out because what's real, what's not, what's, you know, one of those things. So, um, it was definitely a test for us, I guess. And like I said, all hands on deck, the sheriff, um, the sheriff himself was up, a little personal form, but he was up, uh, visiting his granddaughter up in North Dakota and told his wife, we need to get home. So, uh, the chief deputy even came out that night. So we, it was anybody that could come in, basically came in in some capacity. That's why I say all hands on deck with that. So, um, there was a little bit of a strain on the department and I'm, I'm glad, I guess, on our end of things, everything went pretty smooth considering. So I put in a nice long day as well to try to get it sorted out. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service and everyone else that didn't get personal time on a weekend.
The, to get into that, if I'm being honest with you, so the sheriff has a very specific, uh, way of handling this is he has a big picture standpoint when it comes to that family time, right? Is on a normal day, maybe a day like today. If somebody calls me and says, Sergeant Almonds, I need to go home for this reason or this is going on. I need some time for family or whatever. Done. He gives, the sheriff gives this authorization to make whatever adjustments you need to the, to the schedule that makes sense. We can do that. Um, that adds to the equity for the sheriff where have family time, family time, family time, but knowing when that set it, the type of day, like the fourteenth, when that type of day happens, that the sheriff can go, I need help and that he can kind of pull from that equity and recognize that that this is one of the days that we need to kind of go the other way and make sure that we're supporting the sheriff and supporting the operations that are going on. So that's a huge deal that we can do that.
Yes, that's awesome. I, I'm grateful for the staff that we have and the candor that the sheriff is, um, managing things.
Yeah, like I said, he came home and he put a nice long day himself. So he was out, I know, he said that his wife was driving home all the way from North Dakota and he was just on both phones the entire time.
I could only imagine.
So I know he was in contact with all the other agencies. Um, every, that next day, pretty much every single SWAT team of some capacity in the metro area got, uh, involved down in the search down in Sibley County. And then there was two incidents in Henwood County that required a SWAT team. Uh, I know we ended up sending Maple Grove PD called us at one point to actually said, we need a drone operator to come. They had a SWAT operation. They need a drone and all their stuff was down in Sibley County, it sounded like. So like, I'll send you two. So we were able to fortunately send people down there and help them out, so.
He's at Sherburne County now, right? That's.
I'm gonna guess he's up in the Sherburne County jail. Yeah, I'm talking about questions.
No, thank you. I think we, we all knew that like we were in good hands and people were watching.
For sure.
I, I had my Wright County Mayor's Association meeting last Wednesday and Sean was talking about that, about how busy it was. So he just said he was thankful for all of his deputies for stepping up, um, coming in when he needed it and that everybody rose to the occasion, so.
Perfect.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Things are here.
All right. Does anyone else have anything? And the motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending.